Okay, I got 6:30. Call to order, the regular meeting of the Tracy City Council at 6:30 PM Tuesday, November 25th, 2019. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, anybody get any problems with the minutes?
Well, I should note, there was written.
Second. First and second discussion. We'll vote. Uh, Diane's not here, so...
Well, that's my job now. All right. Dave Teague.
Aye.
Tony Peterson.
Aye.
Hutao.
Aye.
Jerry Shones.
Aye.
Anthony Dimmer.
Aye. Minutes are approved. Um, you said you had an addition for the agenda?
I do. Um, we're gonna add 10D, water rate study. Um, this was just given to me today via phone conference, uh, just the council's feelings on changing the rate structure. So, it's a rate structure. What can you use?
Okay. Can I get a motion for approval of the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
First and second, um, discussion. Questions? Vote.
Dave Teague.
Aye.
Tony Peterson.
Aye.
Hutao.
Aye.
Jerry Shones.
Aye.
Anthony Dimmer.
Aye. Agenda's approved with the addition. Uh, does anybody have any conflicts of interest this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on. Public comment, anybody from the public got anything to say? Okay, we'll move on. Department head reports. Sure, you're ready to go.
Um, we had a good month at the liquor store again this month. Sales for October were 49,871 versus October '18 were 43,893. Um, we had increases sales of 59,78. Our profit and loss was up, inventory was up, inventory was up, our sales were up, profit margin was 44 percent. Um, net profit for the month was 5,213.50, leaving a year-to-date profit of 37,537. Um, October and November's event at the liquor store is the food shelf. Um, we had a fall tasting on the 15th, or we had a fall tasting that went really well, and we also have one in December on the 20th. Got some ideas and price, oh, got some ideas and some prices back from one sign company. Um, I actually have four more out there to get sign requests, different ideas from them. Our new POS system is up and running, um, still learning some ins and outs of it, working on collecting names for our customer loyalty program that we're getting up and running soon, and as always, look forward to hearing any comments, concerns, or suggestions if anybody has any. Any questions?
Sounds good. Anybody? Thank you, Tim.
Good, thanks.
Bell?
Hey, you have my report here. Just a couple things to highlight. We had a really nice turnout at our open house despite some less-than-ideal weather that week. Um, it was really nice I didn't keep count, but I think we had probably around 50 or 60 people who were there. Um, another thing I just wanted to touch on is that we received a donation of $700 from Midwest Bank. Um, I had given them some ideas of different things that we were looking at doing, and I mentioned here, one thing I'm really excited about that we'll do is kind of redo how we do our prizes for summer reading. Instead of giving out just a little trinket for the kids when they turn their reading logs in, we'll have them enter their name into a drawing, um, and actually have some prizes picked out that are pretty exciting, so I hope it does the trick. I think that's about it. Any questions?
What type of prizes were you thinking? Worth $50, is that what it says?
Well, I'm thinking for the teens, probably like an Amazon Kindle. Um, I actually just ordered it because it was on sale for Black Friday. Week was able to get it for $20 off, so, um, and then I'm thinking like a Lego set for the elementary-age kids, and, um, what did I get for preschool? Oh, you've seen those magnet tiles things? The kids can just throw together something with these magnetic tiles that stick together.
Like the square ones?
Yeah, yeah. They're super cool, so I think we'll do that for the littles.
Get them excited.
Yep.
Great, yeah. Anybody have any other questions or comments?
All right, thank you.
Yeah, we've seen...
Chief Lipte had a conflict tonight, wasn't able to make it. He said he didn't have too much on his report, but...
He said he was gonna be here for questions.
Um, as far as with the Public Works Department, um, we're preparing for this week. I guess, um, I guess I'd like to pass on just a reminder, and this was the one thing Jason wanted me to pass on tonight, is parking ordinance. Um, that doesn't look good for this week. Um, we will be enforcing the parking ordinance, uh, probably starting tomorrow, tomorrow night, the way it looks, and then this weekend again, they're supposed to get hit with another storm. I don't know how much significance that's gonna bring, but, um, just so everybody's aware, use off-road parking. Um, we will put the message out on Nixle again, Facebook, um, radio, any way we can get it out there in a short notice, so...
Carousel, too?
We'll put it on carousel. Um, Diane's here to do that, we can do that, but, um, I don't know what else we can use for getting the message out, but... Nixle's the easiest. Anybody has a smartphone, text messaging, can sign up for that. Um, I would encourage anybody to get ahold of Jason that wants to be a part of that, and they'll get all the notifications right to their phone, so...
Is there a number that they can text to sign up for that?
I don't know. There used to be. I know they changed the structure. I don't know if it's the same number, um, but if they just contact Chief Lipte, he'll get you signed up for it, so, just in the right direction. I know there used to be some cards on the counter at City Hall, too, on how to sign up for it, but...
Maybe that's something else we could put on the carousel? Is that information?
Carousel works, but if they don't have cable TV in town, if they go to Dish, or if they're streamers, or something like that, they're never gonna get the message, but, um, you know, we'll, we'll put it up on carousel.
Right.
It's there, we'll use it.
I don't have cable TV either, but...
Well, I wonder if you should just check with Jason, see if there's cards, or if we could make up some simple little papers that could be sitting there so people could stop by?
Yep.
If there's a number, they can do it themselves versus Jason having to do it everybody. I don't know if he's gonna want to field all those calls.
He doesn't, I think he just passes on the information for them to sign up on their own.
Right.
They talked about one of the code red, but that really hasn't, um, done much as far as our ability to put out all this is, like, parking and, and that, they're more of like your tornado warnings and...
We need to go back to town crier.
So, I mean, we're doing the best we can to get it out there, and that's about all we can do. Um, we try to get everything out by 6 o'clock tonight before we plow, so...
Well, and it's pretty widely publicized, everybody knows it, snow's coming, so, you know, folks, if they're not getting, if they're not running into the message, they should be looking for it. I mean, you know, so...
Yeah, it's a lot easier for us if they're off the road, and, uh, it's a lot easier shoveling it for the person who parked on the road, too. Um, just all around, a lot better for everybody, and they don't have to worry about the hazards and, you know, damage and liabilitys and that way, too, so...
Okay.
If it looks like snow, just use off-street parking. I think a couple inches...
Yeah, pile all the cars I can in my driveway, and that's just less I gotta blow out of there.
Yeah. So, um, on that note, um, I think everything's ready to go in this realm. That three inches we got a couple weeks ago came out of nowhere with about a six-hour notice, so we're probably ready for that one, but, um, I guess we're as ready as we can be for the upcoming one. Um, I don't know if you've already looked through the report and have any other questions for me?
We're still gonna be doing potholes, probably not after the snow.
Still wanna get, the post office alley is pretty rough. Um, Alden brings them back this afternoon. Um, they closed their scale house, but they got one of their guys from the shop up there to fill this up this afternoon, so...
How are we doing on Front Street?
Front Street is gonna be like it is for the winter, so... They, uh, barely got the project paved one layer for the winter, so we weren't gonna get anything else out of them.
All right. Anybody got any else? Anything else? Okay, thank you for that report. How about, um, do we know where Jeff is tonight?
Jeff thought he would be here. Um, I guess I have a copy of the report, I think everyone else does, too, but...
Yeah.
He had a meeting in Slaton tonight. He thought he was gonna maybe come back.
Big thing on, for the EDA is to make sure that public is aware that public hearing on the 5th of December for the CDBG, I think that's on the carousel stuff, but that's, he's down there, he'll let you know if you show up for that, you get all the input, how to apply for the loans, and they're already there, so there's an answer to papers.
That's something you want on Facebook, too, or...
Probably be a good idea, yeah. I can't remember if I seen it there or not, but...
I don't, I don't remember seeing it. Hold on.
It's the first of many hearings.
You wanna get that out there, too?
Um, approval of the AFSCME contract.
We should have had that emailed, too, or it might have been in the packet.
It's in the packet.
Yep.
From what I've seen, that's everything we agreed to in the call session.
Yep, we talked to him, and, uh, there's a little bit of back and forth, and essentially everything we agreed to in closed session was, they were good with, and there was one or two minors that we actually did not have to go to, as far as we were authorized to go, if you wanna, if that makes sense, I mean, you know...
As long as everybody left the room happy, I'd make a motion to approve the contract, then.
I'll second it.
Okay, first and second, any questions or discussions? Go to vote.
Dave Teague.
Aye.
Tony Peterson.
Aye.
Hutao.
Aye.
Jerry Shones.
Aye.
Anthony Dimmer.
Aye. The AFSCME contract is approved. Parade of Lights parade request.
So, out from the chamber. So, Parade of Lights will be on November 30th, um, which I believe is Saturday. Um, they had some cars parked on Third Street during the parade, and children not being able to see very well, um, they're just wondering if they can enforce no parking on Third Street during that time, and then to close the street for, for the parade itself.
What is the parade route? Is it lining up at the caboose parking lot?
They line up at the caboose parking lot, and they come down...
Morgan, right?
Yes, I've lived in Tracy all my life, and this main street here...
Morgan.
They, they come to the headline herald, or to the, sorry, it's always gonna be the headline herald to me, too, and they turn and go a block to Solomon's Corner.
And then rolling?
And then they come up a block, I'm rolling, and then come down Third Street to...
And it ends at South Street?
At Bonnie and Clyde's.
Okay.
And then they do usually all swing out by the nursing home, but not, not all the units go that far out, because that's quite a trek to go out there, but...
Essentially, they want no parking out there from like 5:30 to 6:30, roughly.
Yeah, it doesn't even, I mean...
And they're, they're just asking for Third Street, right? Not the entire...
According to this, it's just Third.
Yeah, they don't need the rest of it, it's just the Third Street. Third Street is like the great...
My main question is, is how we would enforce it, you know?
Has, has Jason been made aware of the request, you know?
I am not sure I can make him aware of it. Um, they are looking for a police escort, too, um, starting at 5:30.
You know, I see no problem, and it would just be who's going to enforce it when people are pulling up to try to park.
You could put barricades up with signs, I guess. I don't know that we have that many barricades, so...
Chamber would probably have to go out and take care of signage, but I'll work with that.
Well, how many, how many, like, orange cones do you have, too? I mean, even if you had like 20 orange cones, if you just kinda spot down each side of the road, just, uh...
You know, somebody's gonna park between them.
But as long as the chamber's willing to work with the police department on how they're gonna enforce it, I mean, it's like when they did the trunk or treats, you know?
Right.
They don't want people parking there.
I think the simplest way to, to do this would be to make a motion to approve their request and let the chief work with them in order to satisfy the problems, try and mitigate any of the issues, and if he can, he might not even be able to enforce a no parking at the time, you know, I don't know, it's...
It might be moved in snow, there might not be cars there anyway.
Exactly. The answer is, you know, make the motion to approve it, pending the discussion with the police department.
I'd second that.
First and second, uh, any comments, questions? Go to vote.
Dave Teague.
Aye.
Tony Peterson.
Aye.
Hutao.
Aye.
Jerry Shones.
Aye.
Anthony Dimmer.
Aye. Parade of Lights parade request is approved, pending kind of an input, I guess, from Chief Lipte. Lutheran Social Services contract.
This is a annual contract. Um, I guess usually the top discussion on this is the rate. Last year, they, the council approved $900 for 2019. Um, they're offering to pay 984 for the facility use.
What was it in 2018? Do we know?
More, I think it's like 1,100.
That's what I was thinking.
But it's the cost of meal and everything is why they, why we lowered it. They, and they offered 984 last year, and I made a motion to make it for 900, just to keep it even-numbered, so... Yeah, it was quite...
Yeah, I remember reducing it pretty significantly.
I make the motion that we approve it for the 984.
Second.
First and second, any discussion or questions? Go ahead and vote.
Dave Teague.
Aye.
Tony Peterson.
Aye.
Hutao.
Aye.
Jerry Shones.
Aye.
Anthony Dimmer.
Aye. Lutheran Social Services contract is approved. Water rate study.
So, I had a phone conference today with Abdo, Iken Myers, they're working on our, um, water rate study that we started a few months ago. They are wondering, um, I got some numbers in front of you, um, just as a, more or less, a suggested structure. But instead of having 10 different rates, um, with a base fee, um, because like right now, we, we charge different for 5 eighths, three-quarter, one-inch, two-inch, four-inch, and so on. Um, instead of doing that, have a one base fee, and then everything is charged on a usage fee, and that's by how many gallons you use, and the more gallons they use, the more they would pay per unit. Um, this is kinda what they suggest, and what they're looking for is, um, what the council's feelings are on this, and whether they should move forward with something more concrete as far as the rates.
Have they got a number on what they're looking at for a base fee rate?
The base fee, um, what they put together rate for now is $28.
So, based on like the, like the usage data that they have that's on the bottom?
Yep.
Where does that, how does that match up to like what we collected this year?
So, this is based off of September 2019 data. Um, so it'd be 40 cents, so in most residential, they're gonna follow the zeros, zero to 6,000 gallons.
Right.
Which would be zero to six units. Um, 40 cents a unit more is what they collect, uh, based on the tiered schedule. So, I mean, if you're using two units, you're at 80 cents, and if you use all units, goes up from there. Uh, the 6,000 to, 6,001 to 20,000 gallons are about a dollar a unit more, and then 20,001 plus would be a dollar seventy per unit more.
That unit is a thousand gallons?
Yep. And then, uh, kinda on the bottom there, it shows you on the bottom right, kinda, and this is just a real rough estimate, um, you say they just put this together this afternoon, but the proposed income, that's per month.
That's for all the meters, not just a household, so...
So, that's for each tier?
Yeah.
Yep.
How they, the tier stuff is something we gotta do anyway to satisfy the state.
Yeah.
How did they pick the, the 6,000, just because it's a percentage of that's where most of them fall?
Most of them fall into that, um, you're talking the zero to $6,000, the ranges?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's kinda what the state put out for an example.
Okay.
Um, that can be changed.
Yeah.
If the council wants more conservation to take place, you know, you can make it zero to 4,000, or you could add another tier in there if you wanted to, I mean...
So, there's no distinction between commercial and presidential?
Based on the amount you use, or rates can be based on the amount you use, which is supposed to encourage conservation.
Right. So, all this base fee here with the 5 eighths, three-quarter, one-inch, that would all go away?
Yep, correct.
Well, it'll all go to, to a single number of $28.
To a single 28, yeah.
So, the lower end would pick up $3 a month in them.
What are most houses?
Most of your houses are gonna follow the zero to 6,000.
No, I meant from the...
Oh, for the size, 5 eighths.
Okay.
Um, in the rare case, if they have a sprinkler system, some of them will put the three-quarter in, um, but I think we have like one or two in town.
Okay.
The rest are commercial.
Okay. Well, we have to do this to satisfy the state anyway, yeah? I mean, that's just, we're looking at rough here, we're not deciding on numbers, or we're just looking at the structure.
It's just, um, what the councils, they wanna put feelers out on what the council thinks of changing the rate structure. Um, if it's something you would entertain, they would move forward with a water rate study, and then when they get more numbers put together, they just don't wanna spend a whole lot of time on it if the council don't want to change it.
I think they should, I'd make a motion, go ahead and have them, you know, run their rate study based on, on their tiered group that they presented to us, and see where it's at.
We can modify that down the road.
Yeah.
I'd second that. Any discussion or questions? Vote.
Because they would bring to us then more of a specific proposal that would show us more accurately how it would affect each, the customers.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, these are just ballpark numbers, they're not...
Yeah. Say, we got off the phone with them at 2:45 this afternoon, so...
They're trying to do a rate study for us for a long-term...
Yep.
To set rates and...
To help the cost of the infrastructure.
Which the structure of how we're gonna charge that is gonna affect what the rates would be, the recommended rates would be, so...
And they're comparing it also to neighboring towns, so we're not, you know, outrageously higher than the Curry or Valton or, or neighboring communities, so...
You happy, Jerry?
Yes, I just want...
You good with that?
I just want more specifics.
Okay, no, I just, I wanna make sure that we covered all before we vote it, that's all.
Yep.
Okay, let's vote.
Dave Teague.
Aye.
Tony Peterson.
Aye.
Hutao.
Aye.
Jerry Shones.
Aye.
And Anthony Dimmer.
Aye. So, the water rate study's structure is approved. Resolution 201971, payment to Dunic for work completed on Phase 3A1.
This would be kinda the, I believe it's the final one for this year, um, of what they have done so far. Um, are there any questions on that?
This is all that stuff that they just wrapped up, right? Where they just...
Between the last, the payoff one, though, approved a few, a couple weeks or a month of them, maybe, and, and to current.
So, is all the paving done now?
That's gonna get done this year, yes. So, everything's in quantities?
Okay, 'cause... Okay, 'cause some of those transitions are kind of rough. Are we, is that gonna be?
We don't have much choice, because there's no asphalt being made right now.
Understood, but in the future, like next summer, are we gonna smooth that out and?
Yeah, that'll.
Because it'll all get ripped up again.
They'll be back in the springs of it, like, all of Third Street's gonna get tore out anyway. And then on Second Street, they're gonna bring that up to, because they have, they have another whole layer to put in. They just put the base course in, they'll put the wear course in after they get the curb and gutter and stuff put in, so.
Okay.
Third Street will have that little dip there this winter.
Yeah, and they're not putting in curb and gutter right now either?
No, their subcontractor for the concrete is refusing to put any concrete in because of the temperature, so.
So this payment, does that include the curb and gutter that's not put in yet?
No, we only pay, our payoffs are only for quantities they've put in.
Okay.
So it's whatever date they cut off their quantity count, that's when, that's all we pay, so it's based on square yards or tons or feet, depending on what item it is. And that's all in that sheet that you need a microscope to read.
Right.
You can blow it up on your tablet, but then you have to be moving.
Yeah, you move around, yeah.
I'd make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-71.
Second.
First and second, any more discussion or questions? Go ahead and vote.
Dave Teaks?
Aye.
Tony Peterson?
Aye.
Goutau?
Aye.
Jerry Sholms?
Aye.
Anthony Dimmer?
Aye. Resolution 2019-71, payment to Dunick for work completed on Phase 3A1 is approved. Consent calendar, municipal accounts payable.
Motion to approve the municipal accounts payable without breakthrough beverage in Sanford Health, the municipal accounts receivables, and the charter permission minutes from 1/16. Second.
First and second, questions, discussion. Go ahead and vote.
Dave Teaks?
Aye.
Tony Peterson?
Aye.
Goutau?
Aye.
Jerry Sholms?
Aye.
Anthony Dimmer?
Aye. All of those that you said are approved. Now we do breakthrough beverage.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Discussion, questions, vote.
Dave Teaks?
Nope. I can't vote on that one.
Jerry didn't vote on the last one either.
No, Sanford Health wasn't.
Sanford Health is the next.
Put it in there.
Tony Peterson?
Okay. Aye.
Goutau?
Aye.
Jerry Sholms?
Aye.
Anthony Dimmer?
Aye. So breakthrough beverage is approved.
Motion to approve Sanford Health.
Second.
First and second, discussion. Go to vote.
Dave Teaks?
Aye.
Tony Peterson?
Aye.
Goutau?
Aye.
Jerry, standing? Anthony Dimmer?
Aye. Sanford Health is approved. That covers them all, yeah?
Yep.
All right, announce top city administrator applicants. Okay, so, we got together and discussed this, and did a little homework on the process and best practice. So at this point, we refer to the applicants by their.
Number.
Random assigned number.
They are, I did make a copy for everybody to see who they are.
Yeah.
Until they accept the interview, they're not public, I think, I don't know if you wanna touch on that.
Yeah, so, we will refer to them, because we obviously have to know who they are as we discuss it, but we need to keep them by number until they accept the interview, and at that point, because that gives them a chance to.
Notify their employer.
Notify their employer and that kind of thing, so they, we won't make the names public until they accept the interview, and at that point, they'll be public. It'll be public information.
And the council will accept the, the top three by number tonight.
Right. We will, we bring these to the council as the committee, Jerry and I were, and Shane were tasked, and these are the three, they're four, six, and nine. Now, after that, assuming the council approves this, then we can go into closed session to deci, to, to, well, no, it's after the interviews.
After.
We can then go into closed session to discuss what we wanna offer, or who and what.
Actually, who has to be.
That's right.
But then we can close it after that to just.
So at the interviews, we have to disclose who we're gonna choose or wanna make an offer to. At that time, we can go into closed and talk about dollars and cents. Does everybody, does that clear as mud for everyone?
When are we gonna do interviews?
We haven't set that yet.
We need to talk about that tonight.
Yep. So, the assigned committee presents four, six, and nine to move forward with the process. Does anybody have any questions or concerns or discussion on this? Otherwise, we would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion that we approve candidates number four, six, and nine as our top candidates to line up interviews with.
Okay.
Second.
First and a second, any discussion or questions?
We wanna discuss interview dates?
Yep.
At this point?
Well, let's pass.
We'll pass these, and then we'll discuss when we wanna do it.
Okay.
Or we'll finish the vote, let's go to a vote on that.
Dave Teaks?
Aye.
Tony Peterson?
Aye.
Goutau?
Aye.
Jerry Sholms?
Aye.
Anthony Dimmer?
Aye. So applicants number nine, six, and four are approved to move on in the process. Attached to that, and it's, it's not really in the agenda, but along that same line with this, let's talk about when we wanna do interviews.
We wanted to try to line them up, because if we set a date today, we figured then the candidates could be contacted either this evening or tomorrow to set up the interview, so if we could, if there's a date, or certain dates that do not work that first week of December for people.
I'm out of town Thursday, Friday next week.
Thursday, Friday, the fifth and sixth. I'm out, I'm gone the third, so it leaves us the second or the fourth. Wednesday or Wednesday.
Second, we have planning commission.
Yeah.
So Wednesday, the fourth, does that work for everyone?
I'm good with it.
Do we go do like a fallback for the ninth, just in case, like two of the applicants couldn't do it, or?
City Council.
Council made that night.
Or the 10th then?
Tuesday, the 10th.
As like our fallback, just in case.
For the December 6?
Four.
6:00 PM?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Six, should work.
What did we do?
Six, seven, eight. Hour, we allotted an hour per.
Was that enough last time, or?
Oh, yeah.
I think so.
Yep. We didn't get through all the questions that we had, but we got through.
I think we can look at those questions, I don't think we need four pages of questions.
No, we don't.
I think after doing a round of interviews, I think we can kind of.
Well, I think it was kind of nice to have them, because then we don't have to use them all, but you have options that you can, you know, pick out of there what, as long as we remain consistent with each applicant.
I was gonna say, after the first one, we can't be picking.
Right. Okay, so Wednesday, the 4th, at 6:00 PM, with a snow date of, an alternate of the 10th, Tuesday?
Should work.
Okay, we don't need a motion to that, that's informational, yeah?
I should publish it.
Yep. Okay. So we'll move on, recertify special assessments.
Was that regarding the question I asked Shane about?
That's what I'm wondering, I did find that information out.
Yeah, that was, I mean, you wanted to answer that question, it was last meeting, but.
That's what I thought, I just wanna make sure.
I don't know if there's an agenda item for it or not.
No, not in our packets, there wasn't.
14B, just unfinished.
Yeah.
So that I found, Diane had found it. January 11th, 2016, motion by Corman, second by Anderson, to waive the assessments for property on 224 South Street, all voted in favor. Being, what we found is being there's no condition, we can't really reassess it based on how it was waived.
Because it was already waived.
That's what I had found from the county on that, so.
As long as we're talking about assessments, did we ever get improvements, water, sewer, and.
Or hospice?
Yeah. Did we get that in the tax roll yet?
That's not on, I did talk to the engineers on it yet, it still needs to be paved. If it's not paved, depending on what they wanted to do, if it's not paved, they'll at least have to bring up the gravel. So we'd want either one of them included with it before we do a special assessment.
Okay, just so it's not forgotten, you're talking, yeah, I see what you're talking about.
So right now, I'm gonna say there's 53,000, I think, Chris had told me.
Yep.
Currently out there that needs to be assessed yet, so I would guess that we would assess this along with the other street project for 2020.
All right.
Still in the works, just not finished, usually finish it before.
Yep.
At that time, they were talking about paving it on their own.
Yeah.
With their parking lot to help offset the cost, but I don't know what, where it stands at this point with timelines, I guess, so.
Have we talked to them at all?
Yes, reably, but not a lot of information given there.
Do we want to talk to them and find out if they're still interested in paving that themselves, or?
I can ask a question.
Okay.
The least expensive way out is what they'll be looking for.
Right, that's what I would be looking for.
Right now, it's kind of a wet hole, so.
Yep.
They're gonna have to do something with it, otherwise, you know, because right now, I think they're still barricading up there, Dunick guys. I think the, the plan was to, to do that with, when we did State Street, but then they must have told.
Told not to, because they were.
Told the engineers that they'll pave it with their parking lot, so, but based on things I've heard with it, I don't know what their, their plan is right now, as far as timelines go.
I just didn't wanna get lost.
And we probably just need to stay in communication with them, just that it's.
Yep.
Right.
It's there, and we need to get it taken care of.
Just don't want it slipping through the cracks like Tony said, so, very good. So we get a motion on the recertify?
Oh, it was a question.
It's just a question?
I'll answer my question.
Okay. Flower pots, what the budget for? We're back to the flower pot discussion.
So, we can table this if you'd like, I think should be included in here, there we go. Jeff Harber brought this, he ended up having a funeral tonight, so he wasn't able to, or a wake or something tonight, so he wasn't able to make it, otherwise he was gonna be here to discuss this. The way it sounded, the cost is gonna be the same price as this year for the maintenance. I guess for his ordering, he's just wondering what the council wanted to do. It was discussed a few months back, but there was really no decision made, what we wanna do moving forward, so I guess we just wanna.
Chris was gonna go to the chamber and talk with them, did that ever?
From what I've heard, they don't want any.
They started them.
As I recall, it was their program, and it got pushed over to us.
Well, looking here, they did, they, they started it in 2011.
To simplify things, because I'm all about simple. And the hard, the, the heartburn I had with it was the city paying to take care of flowers that other businesses put up. That being said, I would make a motion to purchase our normal flower pots and our maintenance for the pots that we purchase and budge accordingly.
So you're talking, so right now, I think we buy six?
Two big pots.
Two big ones, six hanging baskets, if I remember right.
Not last year, we just had the two big pots last year.
So we would maintain our own?
Everybody should maintain their own, that's my, that's my take on it.
They, I mean, you can, we can contract with Jeff, it can be like, what we talked about, it could be a, a package deal, you, the business could buy the pot from Jeff and pay for the maintenance, for one thing, so like Jeff would still have the business, he's got the equipment and everything, because business owners are not gonna have the equipment to get up there and water a hanging basket, but that he would incorporate it into for each business, this is what it's gonna cost to purchase it and to maintain it.
So the city would pay for their.
For whatever we normally get.
Everybody would just pay for their own, city will pay for our own, and the businesses will pay for their own, but he needs it included as a package deal. I think that's what.
That's, yep.
I'd second Tony's motion.
Yeah, it's showing here, six and two.
That's what I thought.
Traditionally, what?
Yep.
So each one then, it's gonna be $190. On the two, the six is at 85?
Double it.
Right, but it's, here's your two 24s, right, so the six is also the same price as the 24s?
You got the maintenance on them.
But you got 95 here and 85 here.
Right.
Are these the same price then?
I have no idea how we fill that out.
Huh.
But it's, it's, you got the price of the pot and plant, and then you double that amount, that takes care of the maintenance.
The watering, yeah. Any further, we got a first and a second, is there any further discussion or question? Go ahead and vote.
Dave Teaks?
Aye.
Tony Peterson?
Aye.
Goutau?
Aye.
Jerry Sholms?
Aye.
Anthony Dimmer?
Aye. Flower pot city only is approved. Anybody got anything for Mayor and Council Communications? I'd like to wish everyone a very happy and safe Thanksgiving. Good time to enjoy the snow, and we'll reiterate the, the parking for the upcoming weather event, and enjoy time with the family and whatever. Make it a safe and happy one. Anybody else got anything? Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
First and second, let's vote.
Dave Teaks?
Aye.
Tony Peterson?
Aye.
Goutau?
Aye.
Jerry Sholms?
Aye.
Anthony Dimmer?
Aye. This meeting is adjourned.